Hello. I'd like to call the order. The Burwick Select Board Meeting, November 15th, 2022. We have four members of the board. Linda is absent tonight. We have the town manager. Town Clerk is on Zoom. Members of the public. Let us stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First, we have the approval of our meeting minutes from October 25th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four, zero. Next, we have our first public comment. Either of you here for public comment?
Nope.
They hit the appointment.
Yep. All right, then I will-
Before you move on, I just want to take the opportunity to thank Patty, the town clerk, and all her crew for the election. As we haven't met since then, and everything seems to have gone smoothly. I haven't heard of any problems. As I know you people put in long hours, and I just wanted to make sure that you were recognized and thank you for your job well done.
Thank you. Yeah, I can't do it without all the help.
Well, you've done it great every year that we've seen. You got the results quickly. Everybody's, well, not everybody's happy.
Yeah, but busy when I went down and, yeah.
The vote went smoothly, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll close the first public comment. We have a public hearing for the approval of a marijuana caregiver, retail store, and medical marijuana production facility at 513 Portland Street, Trican.
So I can cover this one?
Please.
Back in June 2022, amendment was approved to streamline the marijuana process. Just to, we have somebody that come through. It allows us to waive the hearing. We notify via butters, and if nobody steps forward with any concerns, if there's no active code violations. I would, at this time, recommend waiving the public hearing and approving the license for Trican. If you remember, Trican was in March of 2022. What happens is they have a local authorization form that was on a different schedule, so this license will be prorated, and it just lines up the two licenses.
So what does he end up paying? Six thousand dollars? Because he's got a retailer and he's got to grow?
It's five thousand dollars now. So we reduced the medical marijuana production to two thousand, but all the adult use is still three thousand. So his license is five thousand dollars total, and it was prorated, so it ends up being about six hundred dollars off from that.
Why? Why was it prorated?
So his normal, it's because the license is a year.
Yep.
He is renewing it four months early.
So he's renewing tonight to get in line with both of them come March, right? Okay.
I'll make a motion that we waive the public hearing.
Second?
Any further discussion? I just want to make sure there is no code violations, nothing on the books?
There are no code violations, and I have not heard one complaint in the two or three years he's been on firm.
All right. All those in favor?
And I'll also make a motion to approve the application.
Also, second?
All right. What was the first one?
Waive the public hearing.
Waive the public hearing, yes. To approve the actual application. Patty, do we need one for both? The caregiver retail and the production?
No, you can join together.
Okay. So Tom has made a motion. I will second the motion for the application. Any further discussion? All those in favor? There we go.
Some ethics at that point, Tom.
Well, we got to be clear.
No, 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 I already seconded it, but he did it. It's all right.
My bad.
No worries.
No reports of committees, no department reports. We do have the appointments for the planning board. We have two candidates. Are there two spots open?
There is one spot open.
Two, one spot open, two candidates. Let's hear from them. First, we have Jim Ducharme.
I just make a note that I believe we'll have some possible seats open in December, so whatever doesn't get it, just wait a few weeks.
Great. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Jim Ducharme. My wife and I have been living in Burwick now for the last two and a half years. We built the log home down on 236 with some wonderful landscaping by Mr. Pendergrass's organization. Thank you. I heard about the planning board opening from my son forwarded to me because he knows I like to give back to the community. My family, I raised my family in Somersworth the last twenty-some-odd years where I ran Somersworth Little League and Somersworth Babe Ruth for a number of years to sort of get those back in good financial shape. Look, my goal is wherever I live, I just want to give back to the community and make it a better place for my family and for everybody in town. The land we live on today has been in our family since the mid-1800s under the Proventure family, and we're proud to keep that going on. I'm glad to see that we've got a couple folks here. I just want an opportunity to be involved in the local town. If that's now, great. If it's December, great. If it's another capacity, great. That's what we're looking to do. So happy to answer any questions or get your feedback. On a professional level, just so you know, I am a chief operating officer of a company called Outseer. We do online fraud prevention, so whenever you use your credit card online, it goes through us to see if it's fraud, that sort of thing. So I run a worldwide organization, about, we have about 400 employees, 150 under my direct responsibility. So I run large teams, dealt with a lot of lawyers and dealt with a lot of rules, and built a house here, so know what it's like going in front of the planning board and Jim McCabe getting us all approved, so happy to see what I can give back to the town. Thank you.
Stay right up there. Are there any questions for Jim?
No.
It, so, I just want to thank you for stepping forward. We're always looking to have new people step forward and join our community team here. Other than being in front of the planning board, are you familiar with the planning codes and things like that at all?
I have spent way too much time in the land use ordinance. I also own 48 acres across the street from our house as well. In Somersworth, I spent a lot of time, I own real estate there. So I'm certainly not enforcing it, but I am very familiar with the reading and understanding the very robust land use ordinance, and understand the responsibility of the planning board ensuring the appropriate use against the land use ordinance and dealing with variance against that. So I'll say familiarity. Don't live and breathe it every day.
Good. That's not necessary. One of the things we try to do is get a diverse group of people on the planning board. Is we like to have, so that a little bit of everybody can contribute, so it's good that we have that. And one of the things we also like to ask people that join the boards is, you have to be willing to let your own personal feelings go by and enforce what's on our ordinances.
Correct. Yeah, and sorry, just to address that, I mean, I well understand the position isn't to help make the town look like what I want to make it look like. It really is about making sure that when things are put in front of the planning board, that they are appropriate for, against the land use ordinance as they are, or we follow due process for variance or exceptions to that. You know, I also think the planning board has a responsibility to come back to the town to understand where there may be potential enhancements to that. However, that shouldn't change the-
Well, that's why, most every year, this fall was unusual, and we didn't have any changes to the ordinance, any tweaks or anything. They're constantly working with the town planner and people to look for ways to improve it, so generally, almost every year, there's a chance to amend the ordinances and things. So as attitudes change, as needs change, the ordinance can change.
Yeah, absolutely. And to your point of diversity, completely agree with that. And you know, my background would be as a landowner, as a homeowner, as somebody involved in developing the community. You know, if there are other folks with different backgrounds on that board, if I can add that diversity to the planning board, great. If there's somebody that looks just like me, from what role I would play in that board, pick somebody else, right? That's what I would welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Cameron Haldick?
Haldick.
Haldick. Haldick.
Good evening. Cameron Haldick. I live on 58 Knox Lane. I've lived in Burwick my whole life. My great-grandparents grew up in Burwick. They've lived there their whole lives. I'm now raising my son here. So reason why I wanted to join the planning board was to just kind of give back and kind of set up, hopefully, help the town set up a good future for him to live his whole life here. I work at the shipyard, been there for eight years, I'm a supervisor down there. I work in planning and management meetings constantly, every day. That's my job, managing crews, running crews, and then also coming up with strategic plans to make sure that they can execute their jobs properly, but also with accordance with process instructions and technical work documents, right? So that's most of my day. My grandmother worked here at the town hall, and my great-grandfather worked very closely with building and helping with all town stuff. You guys have any questions for me?
It's, don't mind asking, I've lived here all my life. Who's your grandparents?
Babe Plant.
Oh, yeah.
My great-grandfather, Janet.
Janet worked there for decades.
Yep. Yeah, I bought a piece of property off of them on Knox Lane. So much like here, I built a house down here on 13 acres here in Knox Lane, so plan on staying there for a little bit.
Do you have any specific skills or knowledge of planning, or city planning, or land use ordinance?
So I actually have the land use ordinance sitting on my kitchen table right now.
Interesting reading, isn't it?
So, to be honest with you, other than working every day with process instructions, which is muchly written, kind of like what the land use ordinance is, understanding that, working our way through it, and doing our work to what our process instructions do at the shipyard, matches a lot what you guys do here with the land ordinances and following those, and if need to make the town a better place, making changes to those process instructions to get those things done, to help the future and the well-being of everybody here. I've never sat in on a planning board, so I can't say that I've had direct correlation to that, but like I said, as far as day-to-day stuff, fairly similar.
The planning board is so different than anything else in the town, really. It's like, we make, we have the, I think the select board meetings are slightly more important, you know, they cover more things, but more people show up to planning board meetings, the planning board meetings go longer, they have site walks and things like that that they go on. So it's slightly more labor-intensive, and for some reason, more involves the public. You know, the public comes to them directly with complaints and issues and, you know, everybody, everybody who's building something, and then all their neighbors tend to show up to some things, and they're not always particularly kind, polite, you know, usually civil, but not always kind of polite. But do you think you would fare well if you had some, you know, irate landowners that you had to tell no to, you know?
Again, I hate going back to it, but that's kind of what I do every day, right? I have to direct work every day, well, plan and direct work every day. I have usually anywhere of a crew of 10 people underneath me, day-to-day ops, as well as working with other teams throughout the shipyard. And I'll tell you, by no means does everyone always agree on what we're doing. So yes, mediating and discussing and coming up with a feasible plan is something I do day in and day out. Comes pretty easy with me. I mean, to get all my people working together, I hold a weekly meeting with just my immediate crew and discuss things that we did well during the week, things we need to improve on during the week, and then get feedback on how we would do things together as a group, just so that everyone understands where we're coming from, so we don't have some of those issues. But again, not everyone always agrees.
I think it's great that we got two great candidates. Just a breath of fresh air, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Next, any other questions?
No questions directly to Cameron. You know, I mean, really, just a second, well, it's kind of set up here to both of you. Thank you. You know, that's, it's nice being on this side of it and seeing, it seems like the more growth we have, we're actually seeing more get involved and more people coming up and, Tom always says, it's a thankless job, so was in town, because as Noah alluded to, you know, sometimes it's not necessarily pleasant being on this side, having to talk to somebody, but you still have to have that information. And the other thing that, you know, Tom kind of really alluded to, that's the one thing that I always try to remind anybody who joins planning or any other board is, yeah, we really need to keep our own personal bias out of it, you know, and whether, you know, it's growth, or business, or solar farms, or medical marijuana, we just saw that, you know, what we just passed, it's, it doesn't matter how we feel about it. It's what the town put in place, and what the town voted on, and what the L U O actually stands for, and that's what we need to be here to support. So to see two people actually understand that and come before and want to give up their time is really something great to see. So I just wanted to say thank you to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you. In my view, we have two perfectly qualified candidates, so I will entertain a motion from any on the bottom of the board who has a strong feeling one way or the other.
Well, it is usually when we have multiple people for one job, is, I like to ask, is who submitted the name first? Do you have that?
I think Cameron did. Is there an opening now in December?
Well, we're hearing this, it could be. There are rumbles.
Yeah, so we can't preemptively, unfortunately.
Cameron must first.
Yep.
Yeah.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I'm thrilled to see two candidates as well. I mean, I have no problem letting, if you guys find us both acceptable, give Cameron this one. I haven't, I'm not going anywhere. I wanted the select board to understand who I was, my involvement in the community. I'm here. I'm not going anywhere. If it's December, if it's January, if it's a different position, that's my goal. I don't need a trophy. I just want to help and give back.
Maybe some select board opens next year.
What's that?
There may be some select board opens next year.
I am open for that as well.
Definitely going to be one.
Both Mike and I are on this next term, and we'll both have finished up nine years sitting back here, so.
You know, I'll be honest with you, that would be interesting as well.
Well, just so you know, you can chair the planning board and make a decision later, so there's no-
Yeah, okay. Like I said, you know, that's what I'm here for, so if, you know, I think Cameron is a very viable candidate from my perspective, that matters, but I'm happy to let him have this, and if there's opportunities in the future, call me.
You know, and I'm glad to see that, you know, two people with connect, long-term connections to Burwick, you know, and involved. No, it's good to have newer folks also, but, you know.
It's always good, I know you guys say there's no bias.
Right.
But in your mind, if they got a better way of doing it, looking outside the box, we'll hear about it, even though it's not in the book.
Oh, absolutely.
Right. To me, that's critical. I don't always agree with what goes on. Nothing wrong with that.
The only other, is this for a full term, or is this to fill out Dave's term?
I would do it for a full three-year term, because I believe Dave's term will be ending December 2022 anyways, so it's just an extra month.
So it's an extra three weeks at this point, you know?
Two weeks, to be real. It's the beginning of December.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Cameron Haldick to the planning board.
For a three-year term?
For a three-year term.
I will second that.
Three years and change.
Yeah. Three years. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Again, I want to thank you both. It's one of the best parts of our job, I think, is interviewing the people and appointing them to the boards and commissions and things, you know.
Definitely is the best part of it.
And frankly, it's always, it's kind of a bummer when there's multiple people for only one position, but it's also very happy that there's multiple people for one position, because sometimes there's one person for a position, and they're not really fully qualified, but nobody else has beaten down the door, and, you know, it's better to have too many candidates than not enough, you know? So, thank you both, really appreciate it, and we'll definitely let you know if anything opens up shortly.
Yeah, we'll make sure you're-
Absolutely. Thank you, Jim.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
We won't lose you in our vote.
We have no unfinished business. We have the town manager's report.
As you can see outside, the area where the underground tank is planned to be placed has water in it, and that needs to go before the tank can be installed, depending on how the water tests, it may need to go to special waste, which is very expensive. If it is treatable, the sewer plant is amenable to going to the sewer plant, which could cut the cost. We will likely need to rent a special tank and have it hauled. The cost, at worst-case scenario, could be an additional forty-three thousand dollars.
Forty-three thousand?
Forty-three thousand dollars. That's worst-case scenario. If the tests come back good, it will be less expensive, but still expensive in the range of, I don't have an exact cost, we're still working on the options, but probably in the twenty-thousand-dollar range.
What about dumping it right to, instead of hauling to the sewer plant? We talked about that this afternoon, about pumping it into a sewer main, sewer hatch base.
I'll look into that, see if that's-
Forty-three thousand dollars, not all that over there?
So that would be-
No, that was if it's special waste, right?
Right, that would be if it's hauled somewhere else and disposed.
Yeah. If it, I mean, if it's not, you know, contaminated, or it's just not, nothing wrong with it, I mean, a sump pump, you know, renting a sump pump, pumping it into the sewers is, you know, as good as, as cheap as it could get.
It sounds like it's either the manhole, or it might have to be pumped into a tank, and then the tank goes to a waste hauler, and the hauler brings it to the sewer plant. So Rick from Portland Pump Company was talking with DEP. I'll follow up with them tomorrow. DEP was open to allowing that. I've also reached out to an environmental engineer, just for a second opinion, to see what else our options are. But I just wanted, if you want to do some authorization to move forward, contingency, maybe up to twenty thousand dollars, or a lesser amount, it's up to you guys what you're comfortable with. But I just, since we have a massive hole in the ground, I just think we're kind of nice to-
How many gallon tank is going back in?
I-
Five hundred gallons?
What came out was five hundred, right?
I think so.
I think it's a thousand.
Was it a thousand?
Yeah, you may be right.
We'll get back to it.
Is there a thousand gallons going back in?
Well, we're supposed to meet again in seven days.
Correct.
So I think we can just probably wait and see what the actual result is, or that'd be my opinion, unless somebody has to feel strongly.
How soon would we need contingency money?
I think it'd be nice to have it, be able to authorize it. I think we just cut the wait time a week.
Well, they suggest we do. The twenty thousand for now?
Yeah, if it's any more, if it's any more than we need to-
Well, they're billier anyway. It's not like, you know what I mean?
He has cash on the bill.
He can't approve the bill unless we're willing to pay it, though.
Right.
So-
Put a lien on the town hall, right? Is, I'll make a motion that we reserve twenty thousand dollars out of our contingency for dealing with the water in the hole for the new oil tank.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, so that's just in, that's just, you're supposed to get, the test went out today, or is it coming back tonight or tomorrow?
It's going to be tested only tomorrow. I don't have a timeline on when it will be tested. You just, I don't even know.
It wouldn't get a niche of rain tonight.
Yeah.
Right.
And snow.
What, is it like a double-wall tank going there? Is it fiberglass tank?
It's a double-wall-
Steel?
Fiberglass, I believe.
Double-wall fiberglass?
I can send you the specs on it.
Thank you.
Final update on the fire station, the final purchase price was three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. With commission, the amount to the town is three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-two. The board voted to utilize Fire Department Capital Reserve in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five, fifty-five cents on May 25th, with the situation, we pay that back with this amount. So that leaves the remaining one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-six-and-forty-five cents that will go to the next available bond payment.
The hole now?
Yep. Yep, that, that-
That's what we talked a long way back.
Yeah, three years ago, we started this process.
Well, that's a good-sized payment on it.
Yeah, I think Stephen said it equivalent to one year of the loan payment, so.
Only twenty-nine years to go.
I've been doing a research on a solar-powered movable message sign. In the range of twenty thousand dollars, the sign we're looking at, you can see it from a sizable distance, it also pulls speed data. I know police has been interested in purchasing one for a while. I've been in discussions with Chief Town about a grant. We're looking at throwing our hat in with S M P D C towns for a more competitive grant. That grant cycles in the spring of 2023. I didn't know if the board wanted me to continue looking for something to fund this fiscal year. It might be difficult to find the funding, but I'm happy to find it if that's something we want to-
Coming up on budget season.
How much was it to rent one for the year? Did you find that out?
I did not.
Find that out, James. So I thought we were going to try two.
Yeah, we could.
Twenty grand for once. We're not looking at two.
Make a call, Tom, I got some friends who buy a lot of them, I'll see what the-
If we need it, we can rent it in interim time, work on the grant. If we get the grant, then we can use that money to buy it. If we don't, we can put it into the budget for next year. We'll know by the time we're doing the budget process if we're going to get it or not, so.
I agree.
Anything else?
That sounds good. I've got a few more things.
Okay.
Pilot testing for the water plant is going underway. Jody has done a fantastic job. It's been a lot of coordinating to keep the project on track and on time. So again, pilot testing is going underway. They've tested one of the chemicals in the system, they're working on the second one and a few different methods in the process. They will be developing a report through the month of December, and we expect to have those results back in January. So again, that's the-
So as we're talking about the water, Jim's from Somersworth, right? I'm sure he knows people in Somersworth. When they replaced the bridge, they took out the water main that came across, and then we, you know, we wanted to put it back in, but the Somersworth didn't want to do that. Now we have, we have an issue, they agreed to let us put a connection in because of our water issues we're having, and James would know how that's going, but I think if anyone had a political pull, might help. Looking for something-
Any help?
Not to name names, but my neighbor was the mayor.
He lives in Burwick?
No, in Somersworth.
There we go.
I know, if you go back through the minutes, there's a few discussions that happened at the time, and it was the select board that determined to.
No, no, they wouldn't, I was here, Mike and I, Tom and I were here.
Hey, if you go back through the minutes, there's an initial report from Patrick that says something about the council, and then there's discussions for like five or six months that go on, eventually it was the select board that voted to.
This select board?
Well, it, I think we voted no because of the cost they wanted.
Yeah, like, it was like a high, and they wanted an absurd price for the water or something like that.
Well, for the connection coming underneath the railroad track.
Well, that plus the price of the water.
Yeah.
That's what it was, the price of the water, but you know, we should have done it anyway and got it in and.
Agreed on that.
That's what it was, I forgot about that.
But they're, they're open to a, I mean, we have the groundwork for an emergency interconnection, we're still gonna be working on designing a formal connection. Could be expensive, but it'd be a big candidate for a grant. I also, I also want to recognize Patty and everyone that worked at the election, elections are some of my favorite days of the year, seeing everybody out, um, democracy is alive and well with over three thousand votes, so, well, congrats to everybody and thank you for participating. I also want to recognize the rec department, our rec commission, and Shannon for smashing success with trunk and treat, and I know they're, they've been well ahead of schedule on the holiday parade, so looking forward to that, so everyone's doing a great job.
You looking for a Christmas tree now?
We got one this year.
You already got one?
Yeah, Shannon did. I went for next year, too.
I got a bunch, I gotta give them cut down.
Sorry.
Well, we have multiple Christmas trees, how's that?
Complete my report.
Alright.
Yeah, you could have one.
Alright, we have no selectmen communications, should be select board communications.
Is that an official uh motion to the agenda?
No, 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 we are, we already are the select board, I'm saying that in the, in the, in the itinerary, it should be select board communications, not select men communications. No, I don't think there needs to be a vote on that. Alright, we have the approval of the accounts payable. Thirty, twenty-nine, alright, we have a payroll warrant number twenty-nine from November third, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of eighty-two thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents. We have payroll warrant number thirty from November tenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents. And we have an accounts payable warrant number thirty-one from November fifteenth, in the amount of one million, one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. I make the motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
And, yeah, all those in favor? Alright, tide keeps moving. Uh, we have no new business, no quitclaim deeds, no abatements, any second second public comment? Nope, alright, um, we do have an executive session for discussion of labor contracts, we will be going into that executive discussion, uh, executive session, we will not be coming out, no decisions will be made, no votes, um, so, any other business and non-agenda items?
Yeah, just um, real quick with kind of what happened with this morning in the schools, um, I think for anyone that was a parent or a grandparent or sitting up here, we we obviously know it was a scary moment, um, thankfully, it it was a hoax, um, for what's going on, but from who I've talked to today and and people that were kind of involved and and around with First Response, and I I really wanted to say, uh, talk the wind of the teller and pass that along, but I know your community, emergency management, um, local rescue teams, law enforcement, from what I heard, everybody responded magnificently in case it was something that could have been more serious, um, and I think that's a huge, huge testament to what, you know, what things are being put in place to actually hopefully prevent anything from like that from happening. Um, I'm sad sixty with sending out communication and and what that looks like for parents or or children to to just reach out for help, um, if any of the parents haven't seen that, there is communication links there for them to reach out to, and I I just want to say for something that was, while not real, was very real to many people, and I I think that's um, uh, just a huge thank you to to the people involved to to make sure that we are set up for something that could be, you know.
Can they, that was on a burner phone? Can they crack the burner phone?
Nope.
Well, actually, what I had read that there's, there's stuff coming out that it's coming from overseas, that that people from other countries are doing shenanigans with computers.
There are at least ten different calls to different schools in Maine today.
And they, and the FBI said something like a hundred over the past six months or something like that all across the country, so, but luckily, it was not something that was real, and I a hundred percent agree, the police did an amazing job, there was quick response and.
Oh, yeah, real quick response.
Yeah, um, and going back to the election, yeah, we did have a great turnout in this midterm, three thousand plus, um, I really hope that the people come back for, if there's a vote in January, if there's a vote next June, there'll be, there'll definitely be a vote next June, you know, because the select board members and the budget and all those things, like, for some of those, you know, off-brand votes, we end up with as few as three to six hundred votes, you know, so, just vote every time like it's this, and it's like it's a presidential, and your voice will be heard, it'll be, it'll be magnified, so, um.
Just to clarify, there is no January election.
Yes, no January, thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
Yeah.
That we know of yet.
Yeah, it's too late, no, it's it's true, I don't know, I don't know where my brain is, I sometimes forget, it's like, oh, yeah, it's gonna be December in a month, and then it'll be, you're already hitting on twenty twenty-three, and my brain's still in twenty-nineteen when things are good and happy, and, no, um, yes, but uh.
Before you were selected.
No, that was, that was a long time ago, I was there three thousand years ago. Um, alright, then I will make the motion that we enter executive session under title one, four oh five, six D for discussions of labor contracts.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.